All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. And we are going to call this meeting to order. It is July twenty fifth and we're in our committee of the whole meeting. Um, I'd like to take a moment and recognize that we are grateful to be here on the shared and unceded traditional territory of the Leowat people, known in their language as Leowat tools. And we're grateful uh to be here. Can I ask that someone please move that we improve the agenda by Director Rainbow, seconded by Director French? All in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries? Uh, we have a delegation this morning and it is, uh, if you'd like to come to the table. This is um Leowat Forestry Ventures and they're going to get an update on current management projects. Morning.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, yeah. Yeah, I'm uh, my name's Clay Tindall. I'm the the general manager of Leowat Forestry Ventures.
Jordan Gabriel. I look after all the cultural activity and do all the research for the cultural stuff so that we could uh manage forest while we're on it.
And uh, yeah, we just wanted to give you guys an update. We do obviously do forestry activities um near communities. Um, and we do have some forestry activities planned over this winter uh near Owl Ridge. So just wanted to to provide you guys an update on some of the work that we're doing um right near um the Leowat community. And um kind of how that's transformed some of the work to to other areas that we're gonna be doing similarly. So um. Yeah. Look the slides. So we, just so you guys are aware, we do manage uh the majority of the forests um around the community. Uh, we we assist the uh the Shilkuun community forest with harvesting right around the community. We do have two woodlots as well. Um, one up Owl Mountain and then one up in Elk, up above Owl Ridge. And then we we manage the the woodland license around that area. So if you can imagine, you know, the communities here, we manage the area right around the community and a bunch of different tenures and then even bigger and other tenures. So we are involved in a lot of the forest management outside the the private land. So. Um, in the past, we've we've done some new and and more innovative uh forestry activities. Uh, this was some harvesting that was done up Hankwell. And and this year we did, you wanna let them know?
Thank you. So this this year we did uh two cultural burns uh for to enhance the berries so that uh it'll be great for the wildlife, like the bears and everything and the the community members. So back in nineteen eighty-nine ninety, there's a great big forest fire up there. And the berries are really good and they monitor the grizzly bears up there because uh they're finding fifteen bears sometimes a day up there feeding on them. So it kept them in high country, but uh all of that is disappearing now because uh we haven't had fire on the land. So we're trying to reintroduce fire back on the land just to enhance uh all our resources for wildlife and the people, right? So to keep wildlife up in the mountain. So th- this year, this is our second year of doing this. So we did one in all at uh all lakes and now we're in tangled. So we're looking at all areas to keep doing this type of work.
And we do communicate that the work that we're doing through B C wildfire and through our our website as well, but uh, just important that the community knows. Uh, we did have some complaints up there. People were up hiking and they saw a fire and it was like they thought there was a forest fire, right? And they were freaking out and it's like, no. We're it's controlled. You know, you see all the forestry trucks there. We're we're in control and we're doing this to enhance the the forest, right? So it's just, yeah, something that we really do need to let our community know that fire on the land isn't always bad if we do it at the right time. You know, right now it's bad, but yeah, you know, it's in the fall or in the springtime. Fire on the land can actually be really good. So.
The Smokey the Bear campaign was very effective in the fifties and it scared people off of forest fires, but it's actually uh not a not a bad thing.
Yeah. Great. If you wanna do the next one. Uh, this is some of the the new the new work that we did just above the community. Um, we thin the the forest here out uh and and basically you can imagine the houses are just below this area. So um, it we took out about half the trees. And and one of the big things that was done as well is we took out all the dead trees. So how many loads of of dead trees came out of there?
So we took out fifty-three uh logging truck loads of uh dead trees there and what we're doing with them is uh we're giving the firewood for the elders and the special needs in the community. So that's what we do. So we don't, we try not to waste anything that's on on the land. We take everything in. Stuff that we get. Other stuff with it. So. Yeah.
And what you can see, if if there was a fire, now the uh the the water, water tankers or the uh the helicopters could could get that water to the ground. Um, it's it's similar to a lot of the other fire smart work that we've done or fuel thinning work that we've done. But in this case, we were harvesting merchantable trees out of there. So that the cost of the of the work got offset by the the removal of the trees. So this um this is something we're seeing that we could probably do in other places throughout the throughout, you know, the Sea to Sky and especially throughout, you know, the area that we manage. Um, is is to thin out forest to this level. We did again a lot of um sharing of information because we're right behind people's houses. Honestly, it was fifty fifty meters from people's houses. Jordan went door to door?
Yeah, we went door to door and out everything we're doing. And we tried to open houses to include people to come out to see the work. And when we started, we had uh, we gave a tour to people who wanted to come see what we're doing and how how it started. So everything worked out well. We put in that road that connects the road right around and encircles the community so that the fire trucks could get in there now for any emergencies. So it's a fuel break and the access road for them. So we we went into everything. So to look at everything to protect the community. After the stuff that happened in Gun Lake and Seaton and Chase, so the leadership asked us to take a look and see what we could do to protect the community and this is what we gave up.
So again, this this work that we're doing is is on reserve. It's and it's so again, but we're seeing that it could be done on on Crown Land around the communities as well. And and that would include our our woodlots, our our community forests and and even in our First Nations woodland license. So um, one of the the challenges that we're dealing with and we're talking with the province is a lot of areas protected for different values, spotted owls for, you know, Anglia winter range, but we think we can do this kind of work and still maintain those kind of habitats for for the animals um as well as being able to lower the fuel risk, right? And and our concern is those areas are protected right now from harvesting, but they're not protected from wildfire, right? So if we aren't able to to make it so it's healthy forests that are resilient to wildfire, um, the the chance of a fire basically taking out these forests is is very high. And we just saw it um, the the fire at the sixteen kilometer, right? It's all protected around there, but had that fire got away, that wouldn't have made much of a difference, right? So.
Yeah. So what happened is uh when we looked at all these sites back in sixty-nine, our chief at the time noticed that uh all our resources were disappearing and then we weren't managing a forest before because they used a lot of fire on the land before to burn the understory so that uh they get rid of the fuel that's there and to create your resources for for our people and the and the wildlife. So right? From sixty-nine to now, this is how far behind we are. And you take a look at all these fires that are happening now, right? Uh, and we can start managing it again to what we wanted. I think we could keep the community safe and keep resources available.
Yeah. So we do have other blocks, like I said, planned in in both our our woodlot this near Owl Ridge and and on reserve. But again, that's fairly close to Owl Ridge between the Leowat community and Owl Ridge. So um, it's just just wanting to update you guys because I know that I'm sure Russell will hear from the Owl Ridge community and
Sure, I will.
and lots of questions and concerns. But yeah, that's that's the kind of work that we're planning up in that area. Um, and and looking to do it throughout the the kind of S L R Ds.
Well, more more communication the better than people understand, as you well know, when you've talked to them.
Yeah, we we've really increased our communication. We've hired a communication specialist to help us. So it's it's really helped out. So yeah. I don't know if there's, we have a couple more slides, but yeah, nothing really too. That's just kind of showing that that was the the cultural burn that we were doing. And again, yeah, some of the community members are, you know, from from Pemberton, we're we're pretty worried. And then there's some some of the cultural work that we've done to to collect that data. And about, you know, having the fire on the land, even under these fuel thinning areas, we're gonna try to burn some of them to again bring berries back, bring um some some medicinal plants back as well. So.
So we worked with the elders for about five years, three years uh three years of collecting every plant identification that they use for food, medicine, teas and and that. So we did that with the elders uh for three years. And after that one was up, we went into collecting data for pine mushrooms. So we did two and a half years of that. And then by the time we got all of that finished, that uh made it uh we we put it into our program so that we know what the what they need. And so far it's been working good and people have been liking it. So.
And this last map just shows that the how close the two communities actually are, the the Leowat community and Owl Ridge and the multiple tenure. So there's, you know, reserved land. There's community forests to the north. Um, there's private land and there's our woodlot as well. So it's just, yeah, just showing you guys all that. Um, there is area again that's protected that we can't do any treatment on, but we are working with the province to look at that as well because again, I think it was a lot of it was protected from clear cuts and that's not the kind of work that we're we're doing in especially in these areas. So.
Yeah. Well, it's so important to uh like these, you know, prescribed burns for for omulates, I mean for deer and and whatnot. Uh, yeah, like in Divine and Darcy and Divine in the Hailmore, all that work that was done twenty years ago now, right? It it needs to be redone again. Um, but on average, uh, in that area there, on average, there was a fire went through there every sixteen years. Because I've got big ponderos and pines that we've taken down on our property. And you can count the the rings and the burn scars. And it was on average, every sixteen years, a fire went through there. So it was just a ground fire, cleaned it all out. And there's pictures there from um early nineteen hundreds uh from the railway and how open that area was compared to today. And it's it's amazing how you could see for you know, hundreds of yards
Yeah.
from tree to tree to tree. And now it's just growing right in. Yeah. So no, what you're doing is it's it's really beneficial, obviously.
Very exciting. And as much communication as you can put out and you know, we certainly want to share it with our networks as well so that that message is reaching um everyone that needs to know.
Yeah, our communication that like the the team that works on it does put it out on, I think Facebook, Instagram, Twitter and even LinkedIn, I think they've got a yeah, hitting all the social networks. But uh, I think they also are doing updates um by email. So I don't know if including you guys on on that email update might be beneficial as well. Uh, so yeah, just something to be thought of. So.
Um, I have Director French, Director DeMare and Director Pe- uh Peppengill and Director Birch Jones. Go ahead.
I'm wondering if we could have the slides back up and the second to last um image. Because uh, there's one shot in there that gets to my question. On the way up here today, uh, I was really struck in Whistler as we were driving over the Mon's Overpass by the amount of brown cedar on the hillside up above. So this lower left photo, you can see a few seed what look to me like cedars that are brown, that I think are probably dead. Is this a concern, the amount of cedar die-off we've seen in the last two years?
The the trees that are are red are are actually fur.
Okay.
And it's hard to tell from so far away. Uh, and it's uh, it's uh a moth that's defoliating them. So the the trees aren't dying necessarily, but they are they're losing all their needles and it's gonna slow the growth down. Um, again, it's probably something we're we're gonna get updates from the from the province on it in the next couple of weeks, but I think the the community at and in at large will be concerned about how many trees that look like they're dead around. I know the the chief was worried about that too. So yeah, once we get an update, we could share that with with, we'll share it on our site, but we can share it with you guys as well. That it's, yeah, it's a
Spenty moth.
It's it's a moth that's, yeah, that's basically, yeah, killing all the needles on on these fur. But yeah, it does look pretty bad, but it's 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 a lot of the area around here, like going up the Green River. We Jordan was pretty bad up there in Quelch and yeah, and lots of other areas as well. But yeah, it looks really bad when you're driving through Whistler. So I really stand out for sure.
So I'm um uh councillor with the District of Squamish and I was also interested to know from from you folks, what if any reliance you have on the Squamish waterfront and the forestry infrastructure in Squamish?
Uh, our logs do go through there to to go to the market. So it's it's important that there is one is at least one log sort down there that we can we can get our logs through. Um, we use both a a number of the sorts down there. So we use both the uh Westbar sort and the Squamish Nation sort to to put our wood through at the moment. So.
And so ultimately, your product is put into booms on the Squamish waterfront and moved up from there?
Yeah, yeah. And you know, most of it right now is going to to local producers, like places like um Postland on in the Naimo or uh um who else?
Rich ply.
Rich ply, yeah, companies like that. Yeah, the cedar goes down in into that area as well, in the in the lower mainland. But yeah. That's how we get it there. We're not hauling trucks down the Sea to Sky.
Nice.
Yeah.
Uh, Director DeMare, you're next.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Um I live at Gun Lakes and I'm the director for the Uofc Probridger Valley area. And uh I'm I'm a real proponent of the tree thinning. I've I've been in contact with uh and we've had a presentation from B C Forest uh Sportsip Enhancement Society. Uh, and I just wondered if you guys worked with them on that project?
Uh, this one we didn't, but uh the thing, any of the fuel thinning that we're gonna be doing on the community forests or in our woodlots would be um that that pest B C, the Forest Enhancement Society won't fund on reserve work. So that's why we had to find a way to do it and and break even with with removing the logs, right? So yeah. Lots of different rules that we have to deal with. So yeah.
So the the uh region district, but we just, we've had our done the uh the community wildfire prevention plan. And it talks to the uh wildlife urban interface area, which is kilometer, kilometer and a half from on cow land away from the residential areas. And and that both areas, you know, in particular, that's where that the tree thinning is gonna be so valuable if we ever get it up in our area. Uh, so yeah, it's 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 a great program. In the Williams Lake area, of course, they had their the uh gold gen plant, big gold gen plant, and they were taking all the uh all the debris and everything there. They'd hog it and then take it to the plant. Use it in the city. We don't have that often in in where you guys are and where we are.
Um, one of the innovative things that we're doing for with funding from pest B C for this fall is we're looking at turning the some of the wood waste into biochar. We have a a new piece of equipment called a carbonizer that's gonna uh create bio biochar out of the wood waste. Um with it just, it just arrived. They did the first kind of test up in the Squamish Community Forest. Um, but yeah, the the Leowat and and uh a partner are looking at to supply that and and be able to do it um areas near the community. So that the work that we're doing right now, we you do it up there as well as as nearby. And and that biochar has has lots of different values. So it's not creating energy, but it's at least creating something that, you know, the farmers and and lots of other people could use. So.
Uh, Director Peck. Oh.
Yeah.
Sorry, Alan.
Yeah, um, there's one more thing. The the it sounds like you guys have the uh fruit budworm down there. It turns into a moth and they eat all the new shoots on the on the fir trees and they start at the top and they work their way down. And then eventually the fir beetle gets in and 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 does the treason. We've lived it up here. Uh, we a lot of the fire was in that beetle uh fir beetle kill. I've had thirty-two trees on my property that uh got infected and died. So yeah, it's something that you want to take care of.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. Um, just curious about a couple of things. One, um, do you have to actively replant or do anything after the cultural burns? Or does the or sort of take care of itself?
That that depends. If we do a big uh a bigger block, like a sort of like a clear cut, we do have to plant it after. But the trees that we plant there really establish well because uh I think there's something in that in the burn that makes the trees grow better. But then with the with these new um with these new um management areas, we haven't looked at the planting them because there's a lot of naturals because those trees are just gonna grow, get bigger, right? And there's gonna be no place to plant there. We could go and then thin out some of the naturals after and and let those ones establish and take growth in there. And then just keep the cycle going.
Cool. Um, and the other thing, I mean, you alluded to to some of the the challenges uh that you're trying to ju- address right now. Would you have a summary of overall, like the forest is in, you know, needs a bit of work, but it's in pretty good shape or like things are pretty tough in the forest right now? Like, do you have a sort of summary of?
Well, I think Jordan's explanation of that, it most of the forest hasn't been thin since nineteen sixty-nine. Right? And it's, yeah, it's, there's a lot of forests that are thicker than they should be, like you were saying, Russell, right? These forests were open forest types, the the majority of them, right? Um. And one of the the biologists we talked to, he said that from Darcy all the way to Mount Currie area was almost all grassland. There was no trees a hundred years ago from fires. And now you can imagine, you're driving up there, there's trees everywhere, right? But that whole valley bottom was all grassland. So yeah, this, the forests right now are a lot different than they used to be when Mother Nature was looking after them. So yeah, we have a lot of work to do. And where it's challenging is that a lot of this work if we're is is really expensive work, right? It's, you know, ten to twenty thousand dollars a hectare, some of it. So where we can get, take trees out and and help off the cost does really help. But there's, yeah, a lot of provincial provincial rules around that. So we're we're trying to juggle that as well. So, yeah.
Plus, with all this uh new management, right, we could uh start monitoring to see if we could keep all of these uh forest diseases in check, right? Because without forest, a fire on the land, all this disease came in, right? Now look at what's happening, right? There's talking about that. You see all the red and dead, right? Are we mismanaging the forest, right? So this is something that we have to start learning over again, right, to see if we could keep these uh diseases uh at bay from having fire on the land and managing it the right way, right? So.
I have gotten a Director Birch Jones is next on my list and then I'll come to you. And so we have another delegation coming. I want to respect your time. Thank you. Go ahead, Director Birch Jones.
Thank you. Um, I'm Area B um around Lilwet and extending down almost to the Joffrey there where it meets up with Area C. And yeah, the whole forest along the Duffy. I drive it a lot. It's in a very sick and and overgrown state. I'm I particularly impressed with that vertical logging that you're showing with and clearing out the dead, the dead fuel is, it's just beautiful. And I realize that you know, your profits are down compared to just doing straight clear cuts, but it is so superior. I'm really glad. And as far as the communication goes, yeah, please include the S L R D. I'm so interested. Um, I've been wondering, as I'm always watching, kind of what's happening there as I drive up and down the Duffy. So congratulations. In Area B here, we have, and as far as I'm concerned, you can just keep going up into Area B. If you ever get done there, it's a massive amount of work. First, congratulations. Um, we have some big swaths of land set aside for spotted owl. And I'm wondering, do you have to keep monitoring as you're going? Or how how do you manage that? Or or maybe you don't have those big protected areas. But when you say Owl Ridge, I know historically there were owls there. I don't think there are now. But I I'd love to hear a comment on that. Thank you.
Uh, we do have big areas set aside for spotted owls as well. Um probably ten to twenty percent of the forest at least uh around us here is protected for spotted owl. Um, and that was kind of what I was alluding to when we're working with the province on treating those similarly to what we've done above the community where we are. I think again, that protected from spotted owl is protected from clear cuts. And that's not the kind of work that we're looking at doing there, right? We're looking at thinning out the forests, removing, you know, some some valuable trees to offset the cost by removing a lot of the dead and and kind of high fire risk trees as well. So um it it's a work in progress, you know, changing the minds of the province is is a little bit tricky, but uh, we are trying to to do our first block probably in twenty twenty-five within spotted owl habitat. And and then growing this project from there because they're um, the provincial reps that we've been talking to are really supportive of this work. They want to see the uh the forest again managed for multiple values, not just for timber value and not just for spotted owls, but but looking at you know, a little bit of both and and looking at the fire resiliency as well. So it's uh, yeah, they've been really supportive of it. But again, it it's gonna take a little while because we have to get exemption signed and things like that before we can do any treatments within spotted owl habitat. So.
Thank you.
Director.
Um, yeah, uh, what what I think people need to do in government and that is dust off the Filmon report and actually read it. Um, and I'm sure you've read it. Um because that that was put together by Gary Filmon after the two thousand and three fires in the Okanagan. And he had just a ton of really good recommendations. And one of them was to do prescribed burns on a regular basis um throughout the province. Now I think once the sort of the the luster, you know, went away, they just put the thing on the shelf somewhere and forgot about it. But he had a lot of great recommendations. And if 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 the government was uh you know, really uh interested in trying to protect communities, they would definitely be full on, you know, there there wouldn't be a shortage of money because all this, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars they spend on fighting fires. And and as I've been told, they don't fight fires anymore. They manage them. And I haven't quite figured out how you do that. But anyways, uh um, yeah, I think that uh, you know, you need to talk to the people you talk to and just say that this is so, so important to uh and and I think once, once you get it going and and you can prove that it is beneficial, then maybe they all change their way of thinking. But anyways.
They spent a billion dollars fighting fire last year and uh pest B C that helps us with all the fuel thinning has like two twenty million. So yeah, it's it's a pretty, pretty, yeah.
Doesn't balance though.
Balance out at all. So, yeah, so.
Um, if there comes a time where we can uh support you in your asks to these other agencies, to the province for um support, you know, if if there's uh letters that we try to support you, please let us know.
Right.
Um, because we're all very interested in protecting a human place and and um partnership goes a long way.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good work. Good work.
And with that, we'll say thank you very much for taking the time to be here with us today. And we look forward to seeing you again soon.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time. Good night.
Hey, the next piece of our agenda, we have Jaclyn Harper. Is she ready?
Okay. Good morning. And and I'm very sorry that uh we're a little behind in our estimated time of your start, but here we are. Thank you for being here today. Uh, we look forward to hearing um about the Caribou Chilcoaten Coast Tourism Tourism Update, and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Awesome. Well, thank you for having me this morning. My name is Jaclyn Harper and I'm here on behalf of the Care, the Caribou Chilcoaten Coast Tourism Association um and the partners and operators that we serve. So I would like to thank you for your time. And I'm just gonna share a little bit about us. Um, so if you could go to the next slide. So we're the Caribou Chilcoaten Coast Tourism, or C C C T for short. Uh, we're a nonprofit and we're a stakeholder-based regional destination management organization. We focus on promoting responsible tourism development, marketing the region's tourism products, and supporting the regional film, motion picture and sports tourism as well as creative industries. So the Triple C T has been active in the region since nineteen sixty-two, supporting stakeholders, working with partners and helping expand local economies through tourism. So we'll go to our vision next slide. So our vision, mission and stakeholder pledge makes up our guiding principles. And so our vision highlights our stunning landscapes and experiences, local peoples and heritage, and the need to be leaders in innovation and revenue development for our regions and our communities. Next slide. So our mission addresses responsible growth and stewardship, inclusivity and finding a balance between the socio-cultural, economic and natural environment. And then the next slide will go into our pledge for government. So the C C C T team adds value to government by providing real-time industry information, timely and effective responses to opportunity, proactive guidance and counsel on potential challenges and advancing insights on behalf of the visitor economy in our region. So the next slide just goes into our team a little bit. Um, so there's eight full-time team members and we have four students this summer, which has been amazing. So I'll go a little bit into my role as a destination experience manager on the next slide. So we have four destination experience managers and we are all the first point of contact for our operators and partners in the region. I look after the Gold Rush Trail South, so that falls into the S L R D regional electoral area, sorry, A. So Bray Lauren and Goldberg and B, so Seaton Portage and Shellah, as well as the district. So Bray Lauren and Goldbridge, and B, so Seaton Portage and Shalit, as well as the District of Lilowet. So we provide tools and resources from our partners to help keep operators informed, up to date, and better able to succeed. We hear about their challenges as well or concerns, and we work to advocate for them and help find solutions. Next page. So these are our kind of main programs that we work with. So destination development and planning to provide travel experiences that highlight our areas and bring, and help bring income into our regional economies, as well as collaborate with film and media and our operators and partners on an ongoing business. We also have a sustainability program and can help areas become Biosphere certified. We have an accessibility program, sorry, that aligns with the BC Accessibility Act and the UN SDGs, and the goal of building inclusive experiences for everybody. So we provide accessibility assessments to businesses and connect them to resources for upgrades or enhancements. We also have a marketing programs and marketing delivery. So as a first point of contact or DEM, share marketing program information and supporting marketing delivery. Annual funding is also available for cooperative marketing campaigns and other marketing programs as they're developed. So we share this with our operators. We do travel, trade, and travel media as well. So the CCCTA coordinates many national and international programs that allow operators to capture the attention of overseas markets and allow their businesses to thrive with international interests. Our travel, trade, and travel media team works with journalists, writers, broadcasters, and media companies that are always hungry for stories and want to hear what our operators' businesses can do for people. We also do emergency management, which is really big right now for us. And so our program works in alignment with the provincial emergency management framework and collaborating with partners districts to source accommodations and resources that may be available for emergency operations, activities, and providing tourism emergency support to operators and visitors during events, including coordinating accurate communication with operators. We also have our annual tourism summit and AGM, so that will be in Belaculla this year from October fifteenth to seventeenth. And if anyone's interested in coming, you're more than welcome to register. Registration has now opened. And, yeah, we just give some community updates from time to time. But I'll head to the next slide. Our regional partner collaboration is integral to both the region and tourism industry. Visitors to the community bring valuable resources for revenue to the regional economy, which results in local regional development. And through our partner collaboration, we network and build relationships for tourism, as well as advocate for our businesses and the tourism in the regions, and share the impacts and successes of the regions as well. And we also share our feedback and concerns from local governments and share opportunities to participate as well. If you go to the next slide, I'll just give a little bit of information about marketing. So the slide shows that traffic to our websites, so result from online referrals to businesses and communities, and the geographic areas where people are coming from. So social media and website are very much equal in our inbound traffic. And our six top markets for our website are similar to those we see visiting the region. So seventy-nine percent from across Canada, thirteen percent from the US, one point five percent from Germany, one percent from the UK, zero point five percent from Australia, and zero point four percent from France. And then our marketing campaigns include digital and social media, e-newsletters, print ads, third-party banners, and TV ads. And so these campaigns created over twenty million, sorry, impressions in the past year. And impressions resulted in almost seventy-three thousand online referrals to business and communities. The next slide gets a little bit more specific to your area. So the direct impact from marketing campaigns for the SLD area, SLRD, sorry, was about three thousand six hundred, or sixty-eight referrals. So that's about four point two two percent of the total online referrals. And there was about four thousand eight hundred ninety content pieces created to promote Lilowet, Bray Lauren, Goldbridge, and Seaton Portage. So future marketing opportunities are available from our marketing tourism campaigns for content creation and promoting tourism experiences through paid digital marketing, marketing campaign, and consumer show funding. And that comes up kind of in the mid-October timeframe. So we are also open to collaborate for future grants and funding opportunities. And Rodjigo, our Director of Marketing, did put his information there in case you would like to inquire further. And then if you go to the next slide, that's just my contact information if you have any questions or concerns. And that wraps up my presentation. So we respect and understand regional challenges and potential, and we look forward to working with you in the community. And, yeah, collaborative way going forwards to develop a strong and sustainable tourism industry. Yeah, and our CCC team strives to support and listen to our operators and partners in all aspects of tourism. And we look forward to ongoing collaboration to develop, expand, and share our wonders of our region. So I sincerely appreciate your time this morning, and I welcome questions.
Excellent. Thank you. I will go to Director Birch Jones, and then I will go to Director Rainbow. Go ahead, Director Birch Jones.
Thank you. Thank you, Jaclyn. Hi, Vivian for Lilowet, Area B Director with the SLRD. And I was really surprised when I read in the, oh my God, what are those guys called? Community Futures? That the state of the Gold Rush Trail, you know, out of the Lilowet area was in good form. And I thought, what are we talking about? I know that trail. It's, I would love it if it was in good form. I'd love an update on what's happening with that.
Sorry, which trail was that one, Vivian?
They call it the Gold Rush Trail, and they were talking about the section out of Lilowet. And you're, when you're referencing it, are you talking about the highway or the actual trail?
So the Gold Rush Trail itself is a brand from the provincial, at the provincial level. So the province owns it. So it, yeah, so it goes from New Westminster up kind of Highway One up to Barkerville and Highway ninety-seven. But then there's also the Lilowet kind of extension of it. So that I would say is the, like, the big brand. And you'll see that on the highways when you drive up here, that midging. So in terms of the Gold Rush Trail as a whole, like, it is very, like, it's well-known. We're marketing it more than just like the history of the Gold Rush. And Lilowet, I would say, is a part of that, but we're definitely doing things to advance kind of getting people to stay longer, because a lot of people just pass through Lilowet, or they stay, you know, maybe one night. So we're working right now with Lilowet to make sure that we are creating experiences and opportunities for people to stay longer.
There is quite a considerable section of the actual old Gold Rush Trail, like, on the land that you could walk. That would be so worth revitalizing, just a comment. And also, I want to say sorry for all the fires you guys are experiencing up there. It's tough. And today's a better day here. It's cooler. So.
Yeah, we're getting some rain up here in Williams Lake right now, but I think also up towards Wells and Barkerville where it's really bad. I think they're also starting to get some rain, and it's starting to get under control up there. So we're hoping that that happens. So we can invite tourists back to those areas again.
Thank you.
Yeah, Director Rainbow's fine.
Yeah, I know in discussions we've had at this table about tourism in the northern part of our region, that some of the First Nations there don't necessarily have the same vision that we do, and maybe are not as keen of developing tourism as we might be. So my question is, do you have any formal relationship with the First Nations? And do they have any representation on your planning, you know, with regard to your planning and so on?
Yeah, so we did an Indigenous strategy a couple of years ago. It was right before COVID, so I'm not sure if there's plans to update it since then. But we do consult with all the First Nations communities and Indigenous communities within our region when we're doing those kind of activities. I'm still fairly new to the role, so I haven't started, I guess, engaging with the communities at the local level quite yet. But I do engage with the Indigenous-owned businesses or the band-owned businesses. And so that's something we support them with, as well as we, British, the DBC, Destination British Columbia as a whole, does want to continue to support and grow this opportunity for Indigenous communities if they would like to. So that's something we are working to engage with the communities alongside Indigenous Tourism British Columbia, RITVC, to see if these communities, first of all, want to kind of participate in tourism. And if so, like, how we can help them and support them. So right now, we do have some active members on our board who are Indigenous or are a part of Indigenous-owned businesses. And so they do also help inform our strategy and what we're doing. But we would love to have more Indigenous businesses if that's what they would like to do. And so it's something we're continuously working on and consulting with them.
Thank you.
You're good. And Director DeMar.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Jaclyn. I'm in the facility area A Director in the Upper British River Valley. And as you know, we had the wildfire last year. And I got things I'd like to talk about. One is, we've got a program here where it recreates responsibly. And in the sky, they've got a different program, love it to death. And I really like the leave, leave no trace program. That's the best one that we like to use here. I'm just wondering, in all your promotion, how do you handle that whole aspect?
Yeah, this is something we're really considering, especially since when I've been in Goldbridge and Bray Lauren. That's something we've heard. There's a lot of kind of irresponsible tourists or tourists that just don't know what to expect when they get down to that area or up to that area, depending where they're coming from. So this is something we're trying to figure out if it's, we can do it with the accommodations themselves. So when they get, like, their email confirmation saying, hey, these are things you should know before coming here. You know, don't do this, do this, be prepared for not having cell reception, those kind of things. We also have a note before we go on our website. And when we put out, like, blog posts or information about these areas, we do try to put in those kind of information of, you know, what, be a responsible tourist, like, don't leave a trace, pick up after yourself, know these things ahead of time. So that's something we're constantly engaging within communities to see what the problems are and how we can alleviate some of those struggles as well. And we have the conversations of, like, don't love it to death or leave no traces come up. And we're trying to figure out if that's something we can do for the area as a whole, or if it needs to be done in specific sections. So definitely, if you have any feedback, feel free to email me. And if you have any specific examples as well to kind of put it into the local context, let me know. But, yeah, it's something we're definitely, like, thinking about and trying to figure out how we can do that. I'm just not sure if it'll be at, like, a local level or if we'll do it as a whole region.
Right, thank you. The next one is the St. Copan Mountain Park. And there was recently a post on the Gold Rush Trail Facebook page. And it has some misleading information in it. The main trail into the park exposed. So I'll, I'll contact you later today, and we can talk about.
Yeah. And is that one of the BC parks, right, in that area? Yeah, I think Amy, our CEO, has been working with the operators who use that park in the area to help, because I think that's the one with the bridge out, right? Where they can't, yeah. Yeah, so Amy's been helping them with that a little bit. But, yeah, we can definitely talk about that more as well. You can give me a call or email. And if we have more questions or concerns, definitely you can bring that forward to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. I guess, my question would be, with everything that's going on up, and I know that this isn't your region, but I'm sure you're hearing from your colleagues about what's happening up in Quinell and Barkerville. Are you diverting people that have, like, through your channels, your social channels and your website, are you asking people not to travel up into the area, given what's going on up there? And then are you sort of guiding them back towards the south to other tourism properties, like in Lilowet and that kind of thing? Or how are you managing that, that challenge right now?
Yeah, there's two kind of pieces to that. So we do work with, like, the provincial level to, with, like, the advisories. Last year, the tourism associations across BC were very upset at the languaging they were using. So we're monitoring that very closely. Like, last year, for example, like, they said, don't travel to BC at all. So even though there were areas in BC that were safe, international travelers were canceling because they thought they couldn't go anywhere. So we're working very closely with the province to make sure when they're using the language is appropriate, and it's very specific to those areas. Because, for example, you can still go to Lilowet. But, you know, you shouldn't go to Quinell because that's kind of the evacuation zone right now for Wells and Barkerville. On our social media, for example, last week, we were promoting, hey, Barkerville is still open, Wells is still open because the fires were not closed. There was no issue with smoke or air quality in the area. But now, because it's a different story, and they're on evacuation, and people cannot be in those areas right now, we are saying, please don't come, like, please do this. We're trying to still promote the areas where we can go. However, right now, we're pretty much full capacity on making sure we know where people can go and helping emergency management crews find hotels as well. So that's something we do on the backside, is we are contacting hotels to be like, how many spots do you have available right now? So that we know where we can host emergency crew, or even just families who are evacuating. So that's something we're doing in the backside as well. So, yeah, there's definitely a lot going on, and we're always trying to figure out the best practices. The other issue we have too is because of the Shetland Fires down south of our region, in the Ashcroft area. People can't quite get up as easily on the highway, so they do have to divert through Lilowet or some other detourist. So it's just a hard time right now for most of our communities because of multiple fires going on. So we're doing our best right now to support the operators who are impacted, and also watching closely in the media how they're portraying it. We've noticed that some of them are using wrong images. So they might show an image of Williams Lake when they're talking about Wells or Barkerville. So they're promoting the wrong things. And so we're trying to keep a tabs of that and make sure that they are being as accurate as possible and with languages and images.
Right. And I would imagine it's not just about having people move their trip or reschedule their vacation to another area of our region, but it's also with limited highway access, keeping those highways open and clear for the evacuation or for regular transportation through those, through those areas. If you start to move people to another community, it becomes challenging to evacuate those areas in the.
Yeah, it's really hard right now, just because every, like, there's so many fires everywhere. And there's up here, you know, there's only so many highways. And we do need to keep those highways clear for one locals, like, evacuating or crew using them. So it's hard to divert because we don't have too many, you know, backroads to get people on, or some of the backroads are a little rough, so it's not everyone can take them with their certain vehicles. So we're just doing the best we can to monitor situations, help our operators especially, and try to figure out if we can divert, like, Highway twenty right now, people could go on. But also, you know, if something were to happen, there, there's only one highway really out there. So we're just trying our best to monitor the language and support the operators at this time. And also, for example, last year with the Bridge River Valley fires in Goldbridge, Bray Lauren, we know that they were hit hard. And so not many people are necessarily know they can go back. Everything's fine this year. So we do help with marketing as well to be like, hey, yes, you can go mountain biking in this area. And so that's something we do after everything's safe, and we can help kind of promote those areas again and get those areas in people's minds. You know, kind of the following year to get people back here to help those businesses who may have lost out on an entire season.
And we recently gave your organization a grant that we received through NEDIC to recover tourism back to the Goldbridge area and to the Gunlake area. So so we're grateful for the work that you've done with, with the partnership with our organization. So thank you. I will go to Director Birch Jones for last question, and then we, I think, we're timed out here. Go ahead.
Thanks. And it's really good to hear from you, Jaclyn. And you're doing a great job in a tough situation. That Highway One, the Shetland Creek Fire, which, of course, I'm watching pretty closely because it's at Hat Creek, tipping at the heels of Area B here.
Yeah.
They do have Highway One open right now.
Okay.
But it's changing. So just an update for you. They don't have to divert to Lilowet at the moment.
Okay. Thank you for that.
So with that, thank you very much for being here today. And thank you for the work that you put in on behalf of our region. We're very grateful for it.
Thank you, guys, for having me here today. And hopefully, the rains coming in will help put out some of these fires, and we can get, you know, visitors back into our economies up here and supporting our local businesses.
Thanks.
Have a good day. Bye.
Uh, we are just mindful of our, what our rates. CEO verbal update?
I have nothing to report.
Nothing today? Okay, let's take our five-minute stretch break right now. Everyone's back online. Okay, awesome. Our next presentation. Um, our next, uh, presentation is Jeanette Nathan. And this is, uh, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, so my name is Jeanette Nathan. I'm the Indigenous Relations Advisor for the Swamshlilwet Regional District. And, uh, I'm presenting an information report, uh, this morning on Northern Stat Liam Relationship Building, uh, specifically related to the Stat Liam Cultural Centre Memorandum of Understanding and an update on the community to community forums that we're planning. So, um, I did provide some attachments, um, the memorandum of understanding, uh, the meeting notes from the twenty nineteen Community to Community Forum, as well as some links to some previous board reports that I printed, just to give you some background. Um, but we've been working with the District of Lilawet and the Lilawet Tribal Council and the Papatla Council. Uh, since about twenty fifteen. Um, the S L R D, uh, uh, had funding to run two C to C forums in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. And then the Lilawet Tribal Council, uh, ran a, a C to C forum in twenty nineteen. Uh, the S L R D was not involved in organizing that event, but, uh, Director Birch Jones was attending. It was in attendance. Um, so at any rate, uh, we've been meeting regularly now for a pa- the past few months to organize these next two meetings. They're scheduled for September twelfth and thirteen. Um, that is the week before U B C M. It was pretty much the only time that we could find that where Jim MacArthur from the Tribal Council was available and all of, um, basically, that, that was the only time that we could find that was gonna potentially work for everybody. So we have put a hold on your calendars and please R S V P as soon as you can so that we know if you're gonna be able to attend. We currently, uh, don't have confirmation on how many people that can come. But we're hoping that everybody can come. So I've sent the invitation to everybody. So just let me know as soon as you can if you're available. Uh, if we do have to limit participation, the priorities would be, uh, for the Board Chair and the Area A and B Directors, just because this is relationship building with Northern Stat Liam, but we are hoping that everybody will be able to attend. Um, and, uh, let's see here, we've hired a facilitator already. We're looking at holding it, I can't remember the name of the facility, but it will be up at the Kikit Community. So just right in Lilawet, not in the gymnasium though, which we held a forum there. The twenty seventeen forum was there and we just found the acoustics weren't that great, but apparently they have another facility that's really good. Uh, we'll be looking at doing similar to the twenty sixteen gathering, an evening session on the twelfth of September, which will be focused mostly on relationship building. We have a keynote address planned. She'll be talking about, uh, the doctrine of discovery, an introduction to Stat Liam, what allyship looks like, uh, undrip the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, um, and that sort of thing. And so there'll be opportunity there to connect. There are lots of new chiefs that have announced together. The mayor of Lilawet is new since the last gathering. So, uh, we're sort of focusing that evening event on cultural sharing and relationship building. And then the second day, the agenda is sort of still being worked out, not one hundred percent sure of the format. But I've attached the notes from the twenty nineteen gathering. So the ideas will be sort of going through those priorities that were established in twenty nineteen to see, hey, are these still priorities? What actions have been taken? And then we'll also be bringing forward new priorities. Probably won't be getting into any action planning at that session. The idea is that this will be an opportunity to get things out on the table, have some deeper discussions. And then the S L R D will probably apply for a third gathering, which will hopefully take place in the first quarter or the first half of twenty twenty-five, where we can actually get running for details on action planning and that sort of thing. Um, and then with the memorandum of understanding for the Stat, Stat Liam Cultural Centre, we had, I, I think it was two years ago, I presented a report with an updated M O U. And since that time, Papatla Council has indicated that they would also like to sign on to the M O U. So we've added Papatla Government as a signatory. And I've now, uh, I've attached that draft. The only thing that's changed was the addition of Papatla Government and a couple of the signatories have changed. So I will, once this, um, presentation's been received, I will forward that to Chair Ford and Angela Belsham, our corporate officer, to sign that off. Um, but just a, a note on the Stat Liam Cultural Centre. It's, it, the project has kind of stalled. We, we, there hasn't been advisory committee meetings for at least a year. Uh, they had applied for redebt funding through the province to advance the project into the design stage and do some more cul- uh, community engagement. And that grant unfortunately was not approved. So with the lack of funding and sort of lack of champion to move it forward, it's, it's sort of been languishing. So, um, the, the facilitator of the gathering, uh, Mike Simpson, who some of you may remember, we hired him in twenty fourteen to do the Community Economic Development Project Report for us for Northern S L R D. So anyways, he's been hired as a facilitator for this event. And he'll be reaching out to, I think there's probably twelve or fourteen people on his list to sort of try to get a handle on what are the priorities that people want to be talking about. So C O Paul and, and Directors Birch Jones and DeMare are on that list. So they'll be getting interviewed. And also, uh, Mayor Hopple will be getting interviewed and the Stat Liam. I think mostly it's going to be administrators of the Nor- Northern Stat Liam Communities and maybe one or two of the chiefs, just to sort of give the organizing committee a better idea of what the priorities are that people want to be talking about. Um, but yeah, I think that's, I think that's about it. Um, and I will leave it there. And if anybody has any questions, uh, feel free to ask.
So thank you very much for your work in putting this together as well. And, uh, just to touch on the Cultural Centre. The Cultural Centre has been in talks for twenty, thirty years, like, uh, an astronomical way, long time, like, it's, it's crazy. And I'm hoping to get out of this, like, are we moving forward for it, with it? And, and what do we want it to look like? Who's gonna be in there? Who's gonna be the partners? Who's gonna be the stakeholders? Where is it gonna be? You know, is it going to be within the Rec Center? Is it gonna be outside the Rec Center, around the Rec Center? You know, far so like there's those questions. And I'm really looking forward to, to having that conversation. Um, because again, twenty to thirty years is just like, either let's do it or let's put it behind us and work on something together. You know, moving forward. So again, thank you for your work and I look forward to it. Hope you're not coming.
Thank you. Director Birch Jones, go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, Jeanette. I'm looking forward to the forum. Um, I'm curious about who the keynote speaker is. Of course, Norm came to mind, but that all came in a little too late in the day to try and fit him in. Never mind. I appreciated your support on that other conversation. Um, I was at a fisheries forum just a couple of days ago and sort of mentioned to a couple of chiefs this was coming up. Of course, they had no idea. And there is, you know, those guys, one, one of them said, my calendar is booked for two months ahead here. Well, anyway, I know Jim MacArthur has been doing his part, trying to keep it on the agenda for people. If the First Nations don't have the Cultural Centre at the top of their list, that's okay. We'll learn something right there. I would assume that would be what? One of our most common pressing and positive items to discuss? I hope so. Uh, anyway, I'm there. Uh, yeah, just the question of who the keynote speaker is on, uh, on the Thursday night.
So we don't, I don't believe that, uh, Jim MacArthur has a contract signed yet. So I'm not at liberty to, uh, share the name of the keynote speaker. But it's, it's a, it's, it's a woman who comes highly regarded from Stat Liam Community. And, um, Jim was quite excited that she had agreed to present, but I don't believe that a contract has been signed. So, uh, I, I don't wish to share that at this time. But hopefully, we're, we're having another organizing committee meeting on the seventh of August. And, um, so once that contract is signed, I can, it'll be public information. Um, and as far as the agenda items, um, some of the things that have come up to me um, recently that are likely to be talked about. Uh, emergency planning and management, uh, has, I, I mean, it's consistently noted as a priority. I think we have pretty good communication. But, um, with the Indigenous engagement requirements coming out of the new EDMA, uh, that might be something that, uh, that they might wish to talk about. Housing, uh, protection of cultural heritage, um, sturgeon fishing on the Fraser River, which isn't something that I think the S L R D could do much about, aside from potentially, uh, some advocacy work.
I know a lot about that sturgeon topic. Um, yeah.
And then just, sorry. Sorry, Director Birch Jones, just to, just to finish off. The other thing too, we, we did sign a protocol agreement in twenty eighteen with, uh, Papatla Council. And they, Papatla Council did come back to the S L R D a few months ago to indicate that they were interested in restarting that process. So I had asked Papatla Council representative, is it something that they wanted to keep that working group to just the signatories of the protocol agreement? Which would just be District of Lilawet, Papatla and S L R D? Or is there an opportunity to go back to the other Northern Stat Liam Communities to see if it's something that they would be wishing to engage in as well? Because when we started that working group, the, the intent was always to have all of the Northern Stat Liam Communities, the District of Lilawet and the S L R D at the table. Um, so that's, that's kind of what I'm hoping to get out of this meeting. One of the things is to see if there's still an interest in having that table. Because as you may recall, that came out of the twenty sixteen forum as a key recommendation, was to have a working group so that all of the communities, the S L R D and the District of Lilawet would have a regular opportunity to get together, share information, talk about priorities and, and potentially collaborate on some projects. So that's something that I'm hoping that we could maybe reignite that process as a, as a result of this forum.
Nice. And I have a couple of chiefs that want to meet with me on, or in early August. And I might be able to sort of direct them Jim MacArthur's way probably to see if that's a logical place for them to attend. That, that might fit really well. They seem to be interested in talking about the jurisdictional issues with the S L R D. So maybe that's another potential topic for us and that would be an appropriate forum, I would hope. And with the new C O with Lilawet, just by the way, everyone around here seems to be calling the chiefs cook pee now instead of chief. Okay.
You, Director, uh, DeMare.
Thank you. I'm, I'm just wondering, when, when, uh, in twenty sixteen, when you started the process of memorandum of understanding, was there any thought of, um, or even when, when in, in, uh, the later, whatever that memorandum of understanding was, uh, signed? Was there any thought of having Lilawet Tribal Council also sign? This is the other five Northern S L R D, um, community, you know, or Stat Liam community.
So you're ta- are you talking about the memorandum of understanding for the Cultural Centre or the Protocol Agreement on Communication and Cooperation?
Protocol Agreement.
Great. So when we did the Protocol Agreement, the Lilawet Tribal Council was initially at, on the working group. And their task was to sort of bring communities to the table. But the decision was made that each community should have the opportunity to sign on themselves rather than as a group through the, through the Tribal Council on that Protocol Agreement. Um, and we've since learned just anecdotally through speaking with Jim, there has been some interest expressed in taking a look at that Protocol Agreement, but apparently there was some language in there that was potentially problematic. So we're now in the process of trying to get that Protocol Agreement back on the table for people so that we can identify what was the challenging language and is there something that we can, you know, modify in the agreement that would make it, uh, more palatable for other communities to sign on to?
Well, thank you. And I, I definitely looking forward to the, uh, session.
Any other questions? Director Birch Jones, go ahead.
Just to say thank you, I, I know that this has been a lot of work on your end. I'm, I wish that it had come a lot sooner, but here we are. And, and with the new C O at Lilawet, I think that the timing and with the sort of, you know, whatever the, the discussion is that the chiefs are interested in having, I think the timing is pretty good for this. And there's still enough lead time to promote it. So, uh, thank you, Jeanette.
Just, just one last thing on that note too. I just wanted to, the, the, the chiefs are very busy. And Jim MacArthur did say that they are trying to delegate more to their councils as well. So councillors are getting portfolios. So we may not see all of the chiefs at this gathering. Um, but hopefully as many will attend as can and hopefully all of the councillors will be here. Thanks very much.
Great. Thank you very much.
R S V P, but we have a community housing forum Thursday night, so, but I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second by Director Hopple. Comments? Okay, all in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries? Okay, the next item is Chair's Verbal Update. Um, and rather than having a, um, everyone have to think about something you want to mention, um, even if there isn't something to repressing. Uh, we did remove the, uh, we've adjusted the board schedules of the agenda, um, to remove some items that were taking a lot of time and not necessarily, uh, great. Uh, especially when we have full, full agendas. Today we're pretty lucky that it's ten nineteen and we're nearly done for today. Um, with the committee of the whole, but I did remove the board round table as a standing item of the agenda. However, I will give the opportunity during the Chair's Verbal, if you have something, uh, timely, uh, that you would like to share with the board, uh, now's the time to do so. Uh, go ahead, Director DeMare. And then I have Director, uh, Director Mack. And then I'm gonna go to Director DeMare because I know that he had something.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, uh, our, uh, emergency folks, uh, Mark and, uh, his crew, Mike and them are all thanked for their quick react, or reaction to the flood in Poole Creek. Cause there was a lot more damage done than anticipated, um, for sure. And it's gonna be ongoing because we've got water running where it's not supposed to be running. Um, that's why that dam was up in the mountains to begin with. Um, and also I'd like to, uh, just make sure that Kevin Clark from the Dyking District gets recognized in that thank you because he was invaluable to, um, assisting our folks there. So that was really good. Thank you.
Would you like us to write a letter?
Yes, please. Do you want me to do that or?
Would you like to make a motion? I think it can come from the Board Chair.
Now, I'll make a motion that we just write a letter of thank you to, uh, Mark Phillips and his, uh, staff. And, uh, have Kevin Clark, uh, mentioned in that thank you.
Not separate?
Um, yeah, separate. Sure, that's fine.
Just do thank you cards to.
Yep, okay.
Do I have a second or for that motion, Director Hopple? Uh, any further comments? Any opposed? Who cares? Um, okay, next on my list was Director DeMare.
I'd like to, the, what's happened up at Gun Lake has changed a lot since last time. That and, and the board was up there touring it. And at my cost, I'd like to drive down to Pemberton. And I got four seats available in the forerunner. Uh, tour either staff or, or, or Board of Directors up here. Tour, tour them again. And, uh, cause I'd like people to come up and see it. And then I take them for lunch and then take them back to Pemberton. Just a one day trip. And that's all at my cost. So I'm sending the invitation out and if there's four people that would like to, uh, take the trip or, or less, I definitely want to do it. So we can put the date once we see how many people want to do it. And if we could, if we could know within, let's say by Monday, I'd appreciate it. Just contact me.
Okay, thank you.
I'm in. Thank you.
Okay. Well, we'll take that off, but Russell's in. He wants your first seat. Um, thank you. Next on my list is Tony.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to, I mean, Mark and his department with regard to Fire Smart. Yeah, I just wanted to give a shout out to Mark and his department with regard to Fire Smart. Mo had a conversation, you know, Zoom conversation with Mark and Mo, and she's so keen and so inspiring in a way that she, she deals with this. She set Ferry Creek a challenge for 25 homes, and the Ferry Community, the Community Association managed to meet that, so we got 25 people signed up for it, but we uncovered in that process something which I think is gonna end up at this table eventually. Because we, we, the SLRD, own two lots on Compton, Ferry Creek Drive, and they both need attention. And Mark has discovered that the money we receive from the province does not, that we're not allowed to spend it on property that we own. But we're not. So with those two particular lots, not too much of a problem, because I will bring something to EAD to, to, and select funds to cover the work that needs to be done. But what Mark has done is, as, I'm not speaking out of turn, I'm sure he's got an inventory of all of the land that the SLRD owns, and lots of it, we will need some attention, and so we will need to pay, put our minds to how we're gonna pay them. You know, if we're wanting individual homeowners to take this seriously and to spend money, even though they can get some of it back in grants, to take care of their properties, then we clearly have to take care of ours as a setting example. So back where I started, thank you very much to Mark, very much to Mark and to Mo, and also to Jason, who, once they got this list, Jason Murphy, who is our Fire Smart person for Area C and D. I wasn't sure how long it would take before anything started happening. He had five appointments done the very next week, and he's been around the community and been very well received in the work that he's doing. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Following on?
Yes, following up on that, could we find out from Director LaFrance if we can use area community works funds to do that fire smarting on regional district-owned property within our areas? Because if, if obviously we can't use provincial money, and we do, we need to set the example, not, you know, have a problem start from us, so if that could be checked on, that would be wonderful.
That is added to her list.
Thank you very much.
And last on my list is Director Herford.
Thank you. I can't help but notice we've got a couple hours ahead here, so I've got a long list prepared for, no.
We'll cut you off in two minutes.
I, I thought I'd get a couple of things that, some of you around this table have likely heard of the Chikai Fan debris flow hazard, which is the, has been a longstanding recognized hazard in Squamish that also put the highway at risk, as well as Squamish Nation reserve lands, and the, there's been a project underway for quite some time to, to build a a debris flow hazard mitigation barrier to protect a large piece of of land north of Squamish, like a large piece of land north of Squamish, and or in the north part of Squamish, and that process is now has all of its final approvals and construction is underway. So I know around this table, we've spoken about various areas where we've experienced debris flow hazards, different floodings and creeks. I don't have to remind, remind those, and we've had the the largest and most studied one in the world in Squamish that's been on, with that hazard being unmitigated, so. So I'm really excited to see that piece advancing, and it's gonna be, the structure itself will be the larger, the largest of its kind in North America, if not the world, so perhaps at a later date, as this thing, as that project advances, we can arrange a tour so everyone can sort of see the scope of this, but I'm, I'm quite excited about, about this piece. It's been, I've been hearing about the Chikai Fan debris flow hazard since my entire life, I think. That was a major, a major piece, and that was all facilitated through a development with Squamish Nation and their, and their development partners, Matthews West, so exciting, exciting piece of major infrastructure coming. So I know that we all love major infrastructure around this. This might be the niche that really appreciates the the scope of the, of infrastructure of this size. And then I'm gonna move into festival time. The next little while is really busy in Squamish. Squamish Days starts next weekend on Thursday, and runs throughout August long weekends, so I would encourage anyone to come, to come for a visit, right from the the pancake breakfasts to the good old fashioned parades to lager sport shows and live music and, 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 and the list goes on, so. Hopefully, we can see some people out there. And also, on the August 17th Spock was Feather Shakedown. So there'll be a concert at the new Spock was Feathers Park on this, on the 17th, and I'd encourage everyone to, if you can't make it for that event, to stop on your way through Squamish and check out the new park, but that would be a great way to do it if you haven't done it yet. And I will, I will see the next two hours of my time that I was gonna use for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Bed race? Is there a bed race? It's back. Sweet.
Bed races are on Friday night.
Amazing. All right. Okay, with that, a motion to receive the Chair's Verbal Report moved by Director Max, seconded by Director Rainbow. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries? Yeah, I got that. And any late business for this committee? All right, we will reopen the board meeting. We need to change links or anything? We are. Any recommendations out of the Committee of the Whole? These are the letters to be written. So moved by Director Rainbow, seconded by Director Petkill. Any opposed? Carries? And I ask that someone please move. Oh, yeah. Late business. Go ahead. It's not on there. This is a deviation from our regular scheduled programming.
It's 11.1. We moved it to today, so you can find out possibilities to move forward. The best place for this funding is General Select. General Select is a delegated authority of the EAB. We can't move into an EAD vote here. It's only the EAD committee that can do that. So what I'm proposing is a verbal confirmation to the organization, and then during the EAD September committee meeting, if we can formally do it, so the check might not be cut right away, we can verbally confirm a commitment to it. I think at a lower price point, it's not a lot of risk. We're not holding a lot of risk by doing that verbal confirmation. Everyone's okay with that.
I'll make that motion.
Do we, do we need a motion to?
I don't know.
Sorry, through the Chair, it would just be a motion to refer it to EAD for consideration at the September 11th, 2024 meeting.
Okay, Russell's nodding, and Vivian's nodding, and I'm nodding, and I don't think we have a problem with that.
Sal, probably not.
Oh, that's Sal. I couldn't see Sal. There he is. So what do you, what sort of motion do you need now?
A motion to 11.1 to the EAD of September.
So to Russell, you move him up?
Yeah.
I'll second him.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Just one question. I, I think I heard Director DeMare suggest 2,500 out of General Select, which I know that we can do and I agree with. Did I hear that right, Sal, yesterday? Okay, my hearing, the audio wasn't great yesterday for me. I'll be there at the, at the EAD, just ahead of time, just to let you guys know, I have a a family event, a celebration of life that hits exactly when the September board meeting is, so my apologies ahead of time on that. My alternate will be at a provincial Elris invasive species meeting, so Area B may not be represented in September, but I'll see you in October. I will be at the EAD though, and I certainly support this act, action.
Making a whole bunch of decisions on bats that month, just so you know.
Got it.
Refend all your Gaspax money.
Yeah, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries? Could I have someone please move that we close this meeting in public? Director Max, seconded by Director Rainbow.
That is a little bit upset. She's throwing things around now.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries? Close the